Okay, if I can get everybody's attention, I'll let everybody know real quick that we only have one camera working tonight and we had the, we've got some parts ordered, so we might not have it fixed for maybe three or four weeks. So, right now, everybody that's home is looking at what we're seeing back there in the back, and we'll just make do with what we got. So, call me, nor Ms. Whitby.
Yes, sir Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
The Corvus present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to stand for the pledge and prayer by Alderman Ross, Councilmember Ross.
Will please bow our heads. Our heavenly father, we ask you for patience. Please touch the people in our families and our communities, keep them happy and safe, give them love, compassion, and understanding, and bless them with good health, peace in mind, and kindness in their heart. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Salute.
Second. On the motion.
On the motion to approve the previous meeting, including special call Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, communications, anybody want to pull one of those?
Number four.
Number four, anybody else? How about a motion to accept all the others except number four?
Some move.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number four, do you want it by title or?
Just by title, and then we can discuss it.
This is from city attorney Amy Beckman Fields to North Little Rock City Council. It's a memorandum regarding simplified procedural rules for the city council.
How about a motion?
Some move.
You want to make a second, somebody?
Second.
Do you want to talk about it?
I do, you know, in there, I mean, one thing that does need to be changed is replace aldermen, everything here, the alderman titles to city council, to council member. And then on number, another one, under sponsors, I think we've all got this, it's the second page on the right-hand side, right in the middle. This is something that I think that we might want to look at changing sometime. Currently, right now, the only way that legislation can be called is by the sponsor, the co-sponsor, or the mayor, if he's in, is designate somebody. But now that we've had sometimes that some council members are out, absent, and there's legislation that they want to go ahead and move forward, at this time, they're not able to have someone else call it for them. There's no exception. So, this is something we may want to look at changing, putting that exception in, that the council member could designate someone to call that for them, or the mayor, another council member or mayor.
You are of that, Ms. Fields?
I am all right with that, and we can draft legislation to make that change.
Okay. I thought we had a customary rule that we've already been doing it.
And if that has been the custom, then legislation that has been passed is still good legislation, but just so that the rules reflect the practice, it's probably a good idea to go ahead and formalize that.
We do this every year, you know, but actually, we just started a few years ago because it used to, we didn't know that we were supposed to do it every year, anyway. Alderman, I mean, Mr. Witcher?
That's okay, you just covered it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, on the motion.
On the motion Ross?
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, you know, my book doesn't have a special call in it, what do we?
No, that was from the previous meeting.
Okay.
You were approving the minutes from the previous meeting.
Thank you very much. All right, we have consent agenda, is that where we are next?
Move for adoption.
Move for adoption. Second.
Got a motion and a second on the consent agenda, on the motion, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carry.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I don't think there's anything in there I need to explain to anybody, we're good to go on that. Okay, new business.
R eighteen one, or, R eighteen oh four, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying local government endorsement of so well.
Let's give those.
Goodness.
Yep.
A resolution adopting updated salary scales for North Little Rock Police Department officers and supervisors.
Move for adoption, and we have an amendment.
Second. Have a motion and a second, and we have amendment, state the amendment, please.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I put before everyone's place a revised schedule when the original went out, I left off step three, so this just includes step three, adding the salary for those officers of forty-two-six, and then dropping all the other ones down one step.
Okay, that's Mrs. Ross's amendment, how about a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
You know, we've been working on this for literally five years, and over the past twenty or thirty, these salary schedules, scales got real out of whack, and I thought I was going to wait and not finish it until next year, and I decided that it was time to go ahead and get it finished. So, you know, we finished fire department scales probably a year and a half or two years ago, it's taken us a little bit longer on PD, so that's where we are, and so, how about a motion?
Move to adopt as amended.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen oh five, Mayor Smith.
Oh, okay, please call it.
A resolution accepting ownership and responsibility of the section one segment of Highway one hundred located in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
About a motion, I'll explain it. I'll make that motion.
Second.
What we've done here, the highway department, of course, for years, has been asking us to, to take over the ownership of Riverfront Drive from the roundabout to Broadway, and they just finished a nice paving job, and I thought there was a good time, now would be a good time. But the main motivator was, is that we're really working and starting to become possibly very successful in the smart house way, and other developments on, owning close to the river. We felt like we needed to own that because it's such a large right-of-way, that there's part of it that we really want to use for additional parking, for retail, or whatever else. So, this was a good time, just got through being paved, and so, we're prepared to do that, and we've checked it with engineering, and they thought it was a good idea, too. So, the highway commission has already approved it, so all we have to do is approve it, sign the papers, and that road belongs to us.
Where's it, from where to where?
Roundabout, all the way to where it circles back into Broadway down here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, questions, comments, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen oh six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a correction easement from the Pfeiffer Family Limited Partnership, number one, to the city of North Little Rock for the use and benefit of North Little Rock Wastewater Treatment Committee.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance is oh eighteen oh one, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the non-uniformed employees' policy and procedure manual regarding filling vacancies of non-uniformed positions.
First reading.
Move, spin the readings.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I was just going to see if, kind of a little explanation, I guess, as to what.
Ms. Anderson is here.
Ms. Anderson.
This policy has been updated due to the recent medical marijuana law, and one of the things that we had to do is to ensure that our safety-sensitive positions were excluded from this law. So, basically, the positions that are identified, that are highlighted, those positions, employees cannot partake in medical marijuana. Those are our safety-sensitive positions. And so, to make sure that those are covered, we have to identify those in the policy, so each employee knows.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, Ms. Fields?
When the medical marijuana amendment passed, one of the provisions of the medical marijuana amendment, as well as the enabling legislation, was that if someone was an authorized medical marijuana user who did not, was not employed in either a safety-sensitive position or a security-sensitive position, they could not be refused employment or terminated solely on the basis of a failed marijuana test. You know, that's the law that, that we are bound to abide by. In order to make sure that only non-safety and non-security sensitive positions would have that protection under the medical marijuana amendment, we had to identify what are safety and security sensitive positions, because we are not bound to allow the use of medical marijuana by those individuals.
Questions, Ms. Robinson?
So, help me, so if a person has a prescription from a doctor for the medical marijuana, and they work in a security position.
Right.
They may lose their job.
Yes.
So, will we move them to another job, or do they become disabled, or what happens?
Well, they become terminated for violation of the drug policy, because it's against the drug policy for individuals who hold safety or security-sensitive positions to have a positive drug screening for marijuana or any other prohibited drug.
So, we'll just terminate them, and hopefully, they can get their unemployment right. Don't answer it.
Um.
Well, no, you won't get it.
Alderman Robinson, that's federal regulation, that's federal law. We have to uphold this law, because individuals, if they use marijuana in one of these safety-sensitive positions, and there's an accident, we can be sued. We're not the only entity that has to do this, other cities are doing it as well. We're following federal regulation.
My race? She just answered my question. My question would be, how would this be different from any other drug that's prescribed? But if it's federal law, then so be it.
Mm-hmm, it is, it's federal law, we have to follow it.
I'm good.
I mean, it makes sense, I mean, we're talking law enforcement officers with guns, lifeguards, rescue workers, I mean, these are not, you know, these are high.
Absolutely.
I guess my only, the only thing would be, but, so, what, there's a lot of stuff out there that's a lot worse than dope, or weed, or marijuana, or whatever you want to call it, so.
It covers all drugs, not just marijuana.
Okay.
It's all drugs, even.
Well, that really makes sense, then.
Mm-hmm. Even, uh.
I'm going to address that to you in the next policy, even opioids, yes.
Cool.
It covers everything.
I thought we were just picking on the.
No, not just marijuana, it's everything.
Marijuana smokers.
It's everything, as well as alcohol, if a person, it'll cover alcohol as well.
Good deal. On the motion.
We suspended the readings, I didn't catch who made the motion to adopt.
How about a motion?
Second.
On the motion to adopt.
Now, I'm ready. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Oh eighteen oh two, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the non-uniformed employees' policy and procedure manual regarding U.S. Department of Transportation drug testing program for commercial motor vehicle drivers. First reading.
Move, spin the readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend.
On the motion Ross?
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Oh eighteen oh three, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow a car lot in a C-three zone for certain real property located at five-five-two-one MacArthur Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
How about a motion?
Move to spend the readings.
Second.
Motion to spend the readings, on the motion.
Ross.
No.
White.
No.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
No.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
No.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
That's still only five.
Take section to spend.
Yes.
All right, um, so.
So, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh eighteen oh four, Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain real property located at two-six-zero-eight Gribble Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I-two to R-four classification by amending ordinance number seven-six-nine-seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Major.
Yes.
That's still only five.
Take section to spend.
Yes.
All right, um, so.
So, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh eighteen oh four, Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain real property located at two-six-zero-eight Gribble Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I-two to R-four classification by amending ordinance number seven-six-nine-seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Thank you very much. I have one person signed up for public comment, Stan Smith. Mr. Smith?
Come to the microphone, please, sir. We want everybody at home to hear you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I was here to speak on zero eighteen zero-three, but by the time I blinked my eyes, we were already passed through that. And this was the, granting the car lot for fifty-five-twenty-one MacArthur. This individual has been here trying to get his business started for about four or five months already. He's been delayed all the way up until this point. We thought we were going to get through this and get him the license and get him moving forward. In addition to that, MacArthur has been a place where, that location has been in disrepair. This individual is coming in, and he's going to set up his little car lot, only one to three cars, not very much. We have a very extensive lease with this individual, he's an upstanding individual, don't seem to have a problem, he pays his lease on time, we don't think that's going to be a bad area, we don't think it's going to be a bad situation as far as car lots is concerned, and so, we're trying to get him his license so he can move forward, feed his family, and put money, you know, in his pocket, and also in the city, in that general area, anyway. So, I don't know if there's any kind of rule, or, you know, could this be recalled for tonight and readdressed, is that a possibility?
It's a possibility, someone that voted in the negative would have to request the, it'd be recalled. Anybody want to do that? I'll do that. That was.
No, the motion was to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules is what.
Right, and that didn't, but it wasn't voted on, so it's going to come.
Right, it'll come back. I would suggest, because there's, this is me giving you unsolicited advice, but there is a difference of opinion on the council on this, so I would let it go into the next council meeting, in these next two weeks, I would get your information to the council. You saw who voted no, which might mean that they're not prepared to go forward with this, and see if you can turn some of those nos into yeses. Are you the owner of the property?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But you're not the operator of the.
No, not at all.
Okay.
And we, we had this property up, it's, like I said, it's been in disrepair for a while, and we had some people that wanted to lease, one was a massage parlor, and, for that area, and, you know, that didn't go through, and that was good, and that was fine, but where we, where we are today is just this little small car lot, three, one to, one to three cars, no more than that. So, it's just pretty much a garage, your regular home garage type of thing, situation.
It did not get defeated tonight. All it did, in an ordinance like this, when you have a rezone, you have to read it three times, and it, so it could very well take three council meetings to make it done. Tonight, they just chose to only read it one time. So, the next council meeting will be in two weeks, so I would, you know, do your politics and talk to the council members, and if I wouldn't hurt to, who the applicant, you know, the, the individual's going to run the lot, you might find out a bit more about him, you know, and get that information to the council, that, you know, this is, he runs a good tight ship, blah, 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 so.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ross?
No, this isn't discussion time, but you said it's going to be like a family garage?
No, ma'am, it's actually a car lot, but one to three cars, what I was trying to compare it to was that one to three cars is not very much at all.
You're comparing to the size, not the work that you can do in a family.
It's not great, no.
Okay. I would say, play your, you know, do your due diligence the next two weeks, and then we'll bring it up next, next time. Okay, Mr. Smith, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Any council members, Ms. Robinson?
Yes. I'd just like to commend Danny and his crew in the traffic department, they do good work, and when I call, they get back with me, and I really appreciate them and the work that they do. And the second thing is, I'm really going to miss James Bray.
Write that down, that's one.
I know he doesn't believe it, but I'm going to miss him, and, and he will find out that retirement is just wonderful.
Yeah, well, forty-two years, James, forty-three years, he certainly gave a lot to our, our city, and, and I hate to lose him, but he, he's given us plenty of time to, to try to figure out what we're going to do to replace him, so thank you for that, James, and we'll have plenty of opportunities, you know, opportunities between now and, and May to say goodbye to you, so thank you. Mr. Height?
And I just throw in, I'm going to miss him, too. The one thing I am going to miss about him is that there's a potential that his replacement is going to come back and offer us those long PowerPoint presentations that his predecessor used to do in city council, you know, he'd come in here once in a while, put on a long PowerPoint. One thing I like about Mr. Bray is that he'd get right to the point.
That's right. No messing around. Mr. Witcher?
Mayor, as we, we are reaching the end of our council meeting, I wanted to visit with my fellow council members, and you, and the public. I guess over the last thirty-plus years, beginning in nineteen eighty-six, the, I ran citywide for the North Little Rock School Board, and it continued that way during the time that I served, the six and a half years. What was really interesting about that period in my life was thirty days after I was elected to the school board, Judge Henry Woods consolidated the three Plaxi County school districts, and I thought, well, this is going to be the shortest term in office of anyone that I've ever heard of. Well, it didn't occur that way. for tonight and readdressed? Is that a possibility?
It, it's a possibility, someone that voted in the, uh, negative would have to request the, uh, it be recalled. Anybody wanna do that? I'll do that. That was-
No, the move, the motion was to suspend the-
Motion to suspend the rules is what-
Right, and that just, but it wasn't voted on, so it's gonna come back.
Right, it'll come back. I, I would suggest, because there's, this is me giving you unsolicited advice, but, um,